Except supervisors burning and asanas are excused and district aid is vacant.
Dan Hanson.
And, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Dan Hanson.
And Dan Hanson is also excused. Okay. Are there any adjustments to the minutes from the last committee of the whole meeting? April 3rd, 2025. Seeing none, the minutes are approved. Public comment. I don't have any public comment notes. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll move to the business items. The business items. Everybody has the big sheet in front of them with yellow highlights. I'm going to call on our administrator, Ken Witt, to go through that. Ken is going to handle the entire budget this morning. We won't be having department chiefs, with a couple of exceptions, come up to describe some specific items. So the yellow items are the ones that Ken is going to go over in detail. The white items, if anybody would like to bring those up, feel free to bring any of those items up. Ken can contact, comment on those. But otherwise, we'll more or less treat those as consent agenda items. But again, anybody can raise any of those items they'd like to. But Ken will focus on the yellow items. So I'll call on Administrator Witt.
All right. Thank you. So we're going to start with the facilities projects. We're just going to go right down in order on the spreadsheet. So again, those first, you know, eight to 10 projects here aren't highlighted. So if anyone had a question on those, now would be the perfect time to ask that. Otherwise, we'll go on to the highlighted ones. And the reason these are highlighted then is they're either new projects. They're larger dollar amounts coming up in 2026. Or they're just significant enough that I thought it was worthwhile to talk about. The ones that are not highlighted are fairly routine. You've probably seen them for years, traveling down the list. And they may not be in the immediate year of funding. So that's the difference between which ones got highlighted and which ones didn't. So the first one is a parking lot on the south side of the government center for $150,000. When we originally designed and built this project, the expansion project here at the government center, we had planned on a parking lot, amongst other things. And some of those things got cut from that original project in order to meet the budget. So this was one of the things that was cut. Where this parking lot would be located is where the trailers are, the construction trailers. That's where it's at. It already has the foundation base built. This is really just the paving part of it. And it's primarily used for employee parking, entering from that south side entrance. And so this was something that had been cut from the original project. As of today, we would have enough contingency funds to cover this. I don't know by October if we still would or not. So we've put it into the cups, into the KIP, sort of as a placeholder to make sure that there are funds to finish that paving project if necessary. So we'll use any remaining contingency funds if available. But if not, we're asking for funds to be available for this. So that's the south side parking lot. The next project is $140,000 slated for 2027. It's the Huber area of the jail. It's carpet removal and floor polishing. So we're going to take the carpet out, which is original since 93. So if anyone needed some scrap carpet. But we're just going to polish the floor instead of installing new carpet there. So it'll just be a polished concrete then. And that should last us the next 40 years. All right. Moving down to IET. There's a new project on here. It was added way out into 2030. It's $500,000. But it's court AV upgrades. So if you remember, about five years ago, we did a large expansion of the upstairs technology. We installed a whole bunch of screens and other AV equipment for the courts. By 2030, all of those items are going to have, start to have met the end of their life. And so that's going to take a renewal of those electronic items. So we're planning about $500,000, five years out. Moving down the list then. And again, if there's anything in particular you wanted, let me know. We'll get to the sheriff's department then. We have a whole bunch of highlighted stuff. All of these are new on here. You can tell by the red font on there. The first one, Project 10127. That's the sheriff's patrol boat replacement. So we have patrol on the river, St. Croix River. So this boat is used on there. We had a new boat. About five years ago already, Sheriff? Yeah, it was five years ago already. So this, that boat will be 10 years old by the time we hit 2030. So again, it's just a time that we're cycling through. Some of these things are recurring. They're just recurring really far apart. So that's the replacement of that boat. $240,000. It's a big fast boat. So they're very expensive. We do get reimbursement from the DNR. They actually do reimburse us the following five years. We get a portion of that money back. So there is some reimbursement. Also then, out in 2030, the next project, we have dash and body camera replacement. So again, we have all of those items now. But at the lifecycle, by 2030, those will be coming up for replacement. The next two items, I'm going to scroll down just a little bit. They're kind of related. If you look down under emergency communications, we have 11.6 million for communication tower infrastructure. These are kind of related to that. This is more though, the handheld radios. So it's the mobile radios and the portable radios. So replacing those. Those have gotten surprisingly expensive. And so there's a lot of them though. All of the sheriff's department employees have them. They're in all of the vehicles. So those items are being replaced in that same timeframe as that communications tower. So sort of think about those as projects that are tied together because they're jointly related. So both more mobile radios and the portable radios with dual band. A few new items then that have been added into 2030 under the sheriff's department. We have squad car radar unit replacement. Again, this is a replacement. Those have an extended period of life, more than five years. You don't see these all the time. But coming up in 2030, we'll be hitting the time to replace those. Taser replacements. The Trimble forensic scanner. That's for accident site reconstruction. I finally found out what that is. Aren't you proud of me, Sheriff? So that's used for reconstructing accident scenes. And then we have cradle point squad car replacements. I don't know what the cradle points are now. Sounds like it's a baby safety seat or something. It's probably not that. But it's out in 2030 for $21,000. And it's replacing existing equipment that's in the vehicles. All right. So those are some of the new things on the list that I wanted to make sure we went over. The two big projects are what we're going to go over next then. And that is the jail expansion project. So that's in 2027 for 57.6 million right now. When we originally started looking at this project, we'd estimated, I think, just under $30,000, $30 million. And that project has grown a little bit in scope, but also just the inflation. From the time that we first started looking at this, which is probably, you know, a good five years ago now, to now, the inflation costs have grown just so dramatically. So I'm going to turn it over to Brent Standard. And he's going to go over that project in a little bit more detail, considering the size and scope of it. So that you guys have a full understanding before we ask you to spend that much money. You know, the thing I forgot to do, it was the paddle voting. Nobody corrected me on that. So of the ones that I went through, I guess, and I'll try to remember to do that moving forward. But on the ones that we've gone through, has there been anyone opposed to any of the other projects so far? They all seem to be fairly routine and recurring. But I guess if you had anything that you wanted to say you weren't as excited about. Yep, Supervisor Counter.
Just one question with the replacement of mobile radio equipment and everything. For doing that large of a purchase, is it worth coordinating with any of the municipalities and fire departments at that point if, for getting a large purchase deal?
We are actually. We've talked about that. Doing a single purchase and being the conduit then down to the local units of government for their emergency services units also. Yeah. This would just include though, our portion or our equipment. But yes, we did talk about that, absolutely. Yep. All right. So so far, all the projects are okay? All right, excellent. Thank you. I'll remember to vote on those next time. Forgot my own rules. All right, Brent.
Thank you. Good morning. I think one of the things I'd like you guys to come away with is the need. We had done a study a couple of years ago where an analyst had looked at our jail population and projected what the population is going to be for the next 10 to 15 years. And just as a background, our total inmate capacity in the jail is 184 inmates. The number that we try to focus on a little bit is the functional capacity of the jail, which the State Department of Corrections recommends that you don't exceed 80% of your total capacity. It starts to get pretty contentious in the jail. Anxiety levels raise. And it's harder, much harder to separate inmates that need to be separated, which opens you up to some liability and inmate assaults, tensions rise. So that number for our functional capacity is 147 inmates. So that's kind of the number that we've been working on. There's nothing at the Department of Corrections that says you can't go over 147. It's a general guideline that they've come up with through all of their years of inspecting jails and corrections. So as far as our average daily populations go, we're starting to trend back to the pre-COVID levels, which, you know, I think the CJCC and other parts of government have, and criminal justice system have, had done a good job of trying not to incarcerate people if we didn't have to with deferments and other alternatives to prosecutions. So we're getting back up there. And as far as the projections went with the analyst, he had suggested that around the 2025 mark, our averages would be between 118 and 140 inmates per day. Right now, we're trending at 112 inmates through the first part of this year. Last year, we're at 115 inmates as our average daily population, with the maximum number of inmates that we had at any one day. Last year and this year was 140 and 139. So on Monday, we had 141 inmates in our care. So we're, we're starting to trend towards that 147 number. And we believe that once we consistently start hitting 150 inmates, we will have to start shipping them to other counties to house for us. So I'm hoping that doesn't happen this year. I don't think it will, but it is possible. Typically, our highest population months is August and September. Once the summer season starts going in front of judges with adjudications and they start being sentenced to jail. So, and that number kind of starts to go back down in the wintertime. So we're, we're still trending the way the analysts thought. And it's about $50 a day to house an inmate outside of the county. That number has been rising lately. So in the next couple of years, we're probably going to be looking at $60 to $65 a day per inmate. So anybody have any questions? I know there's a lot there, so.
What's the average stay for an inmate?
Well, so that was another interesting, that was another interesting part of the, the analysis that we did. Half of the population that we have stays between one and four days. The other half stays a little bit longer of a time period. So as part of this project with building a new receiving center and a booking center where inmates that are staying here only one to four days don't actually get transferred down into general population. They stay up in this temporary holding area and then they're released. Would relieve a lot of pressure on the jail.
Anyone else?
Supervisor Hanson. Oh, let me just say, if there are, as we always are thoughtful, courteous questions, why don't we just direct them directly to the chief deputy or to Administrator Witt directly? You don't have to call on me. So you go ahead and direct it to the chief deputy.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
I keep hearing and reading that the crime is going down where a load for quite a period of time. And I know the population is going up. But have you considered the fact that you may have, you may have fewer convictions? And is there a way that we can avoid building an entire new jail?
Trustily, the sheriff and I had a conversation about that this morning. And we had discussed regarding the, the population coming back from the pre-COVID levels. It dipped down. We, we had 60 inmates in our jail during COVID times. And now we're trending back up. So I know that we're trying to do everything that we can through the CJCC to not send inmates to jail, people to jail if we can help it. But those numbers are still coming back up to the pre-COVID level. So I, it might be a better discussion for the judges or somebody in that side of the house to talk about convictions and, and the numbers. We house the inmates that the judges are sending our way. So it's kind of a hard question to answer. But I know we were, so we're sending inmates out on electronical monitoring if we can in lieu of Huber. But our Huber center, right now, we have 16 to 20 inmates in it, which is pretty high for recent levels. They have to spend a number, a couple of weeks in Huber before they can qualify for electronical monitoring. So we are doing things like that, but our numbers are up.
I don't want you to misinterpret my comments. I'm concerned about the health and career welfare and personal safety of the people who work in the jail. Is this on? Okay. But it's a huge amount of money. And, and we did such a good job, you did such a good job during COVID, paring back the judges, everybody did. Paring back and limiting the population in the jail. And I use that as an example when I wonder, do we really want to spend what I'm going to assume is going to be another $60, $65 million to build a jail? And I'm really, just for the sake of the people who pay taxes, would, would like to avoid some of that. So. So, you know, it's just, it's a tough thing for me to swallow right now, considering we just went through COVID just six years ago and dropped the population that much by necessity. I, I think spending that much taxpayer money is also of necessity. And I'm not trying to lecture you, Brent. I just, I, this is a soapbox I have to get on because I really feel strongly about this.
No, I understand. And I, I think we all want to be responsible with the taxpayers' money. That's my money, that's your money. But what I'll say to that is our priority is the booking receiving center and some more special housing cells. So if we build the booking center where we can house this 50% of inmates that are only here for one to four days, that may defer for a while the need to build another pod for general housing. The analyst that, that looked at our project said that if, if we build 28 to 30 beds of an intake center, it would be a godsend to our jail because we wouldn't have that population having to move down into our pod and our general population. Because we can hopefully get that, turn, them turned around and out of the jail fairly quickly and efficiently. And as far as the special housing unit goes, and I know you had a lot of questions on that when we built that a few years ago, the nine, the nine beds that we have in there. It's been consistently full at around 80, 89 to 90%. So eight out of the nine cells are full almost every day. We try to keep at least one cell available for somebody that is coming into a mental health crisis or having some sort of other medical episode. But the need has been there and it's helped tremendously. So we definitely appreciated that.
So correct me if I'm wrong. We, we've looked at some plans for the remodel portion and the new, the new population addition. Now, the, the intake is what would be considered the remodel portion. Am I right?
No, that would be new.
That would be new. Okay. So what was in the remodel portion that would be on the south side of the existing?
So the remodel portion would be kitchen, medical, mental health, and then to jail administration. We originally had jail administration in the government center expansion. But because we were looking at the, the larger expansion of the jail itself, that was also taken out of this project because our jail administration has grown out of its space. So jail administration was part of it. And also a little bit of a renovation to the current Huber section from the larger housing units of 16 to 28, down to eight person blocks.
Because to me, the, the remodel portion and maybe we look at the, the intake part of a new construction addition makes sense to me. Adding 57 million, if we're talking about, I mean, I know that it's not just these numbers. But if you look at 57 million and if we have to ship somebody to a different county for $65 a day, that's 876,000 inmate days. That's a lot of money. So I think we, we need to pare this down to what we actually need right now. And with those averages at 116, 115, I know we have some, some that go up into those higher numbers for a day or two. But if we can find something like that intake that's going to buffer that, I think that's what makes sense. I think we, we pare this number way down to, to something much smaller and maybe look at pushing that, that pod out to 2030, 2031, something like that. Just to put it as a placeholder to see how it goes.
Yeah. And just as a, a good number that I had come up with, as far as housing inmates out of the county, for every 10 inmates that we house out of the county, would cost us about $22,000 per month. It was a good round number.
Can you give us an estimate of the cost if we built just a new intake without building a new pod?
Well. Yeah. The pod was 10 to 12 million. With some other changes to the renovation, we could probably pare that down more. I don't know that I can give you a, a good number sitting here today.
We had looked at the project, we'd asked the same questions. And you can take the pod part off of this project. The pod itself was about 10 to 12 million and delay that portion of it. But you come from 55 down to $45 million. And when you decide you're going to add that pod, you're then going to spend 30 million to add the pod instead of 10 million. And so it was a matter of time and benefit of delaying that portion of the project. It's the, the project, the 45 million core of that, it's all the reconstruction. What Brent was trying to say is when this jail was built in 93, detention was looked at in one way. And the way we look at detention now is much different. So a lot more special needs cells, a lot more holding cells than the way they were designing jails in 1993. So it's really, it's switching around all of the internal components. And that's why that core is so expensive.
So are you looking at more or less remodeling the whole existing jail then?
Yeah. I mean, other than, you know, the current pods, the current pods really aren't changing. But the internal guts, the kitchen, the administration, the health part. They might switch the receiving from one side, the intake from one side to the other side. That's why it's, why it's changing so much.
Supervisor Rice.
Yes, I have two questions. And one has to do with, to what do you attribute the big dip during COVID that's been alerted, alerted, you know, alluded to here?
Well, we, we tried to do a lot more remote monitoring. The judges, I don't know the best terminology for it. I wouldn't say they commuted sentences. But we tried to defer a lot of judgments and sentences if we could. And that was at the court level, not at the sheriff's office level. And we looked at how we're prosecuting people and getting them through the criminal justice system.
I was curious if there was a connection or correlation because we had a lot of taverns and restaurants that closed or reduced capacity. Was that connected?
Yeah, I think, I think we did see a reduction in the crime numbers because people weren't out. We didn't want people coming here. We didn't, however, we did have a period of time when we were a little more open for business than the Minnesota side. And Minnesota people were coming here. And we had a pretty huge uptick in crime, especially in the Hudson area where people were coming. So there's a lot of different factors that went into the reduction of our population at the time. But a lot of it was driven by purposeful policy decisions.
And then a different topic. There's been a lot of conversation about how we spend so much money transporting someone who has been arrested, who's in a severe mental health crisis. And I think, is it all the way across the state to Winnebago? Would a project like this include in its scope the ability to manage that expense and risk?
No.
No?
No. Anybody that would still be in our jail that had developed a mental health crisis or came in with severe mental health problems, that probably wouldn't help a whole lot. Trying to keep them a little bit more safe with safer cells and accommodations is helpful. To have fewer conduits for somebody to harm themselves or assault other inmates or staff is helpful. But it's not, wouldn't be designed as a alternate housing for somebody in crisis in lieu of transporting to Winnebago, no, unfortunately not.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Leaf and then Supervisor Anderson.
Yeah, so when we've done our jail inspections, one of the first stops is the center where you come in, the command center, whatever you call it. And you see the board, and it's like a Tetris board, right? You have certain number of people that cannot be housed in certain ways. You have all sorts of rules for a lot of good reasons. That's what makes this, this current facility more challenging, correct? Because you can't put certain people with certain people. And I think some of the receiving cells are being used longer than they should be. So I feel like if we can do something, at least I understand the cost and all of that and trying to pay down other debt for the county and all the things. But I think something clearly needs to be done to make this just more efficient and more safe for everybody.
Thank you.
Supervisor Anderson.
Yeah, so I guess just to clarify back to the COVID population, most of that was due to decisions both at the, well, at all levels of law enforcement that probably aren't going to be sustained long-term or wouldn't be sustained long-term, correct, decision types?
Well, and I think some of those decisions and programs and policies are continued to this day. And despite that, we still have seen an increase in our jail population. So I think there were good lessons and things that we learned during that period that are still being implemented to reduce the jail population and the liability there. So.
So I guess maybe a combination of that and the fact that people are out more now, basically.
I think so. And we're seeing with the corridors that we have, we're just seeing an increase in people in St. Croix County, traveling through St. Croix County, enjoying St. Croix County. And that other, some of the other element comes with it.
I'm going to call on Chairman Long at this time. And his comments may lead us to a conclusion on this part of the, of our morning. And Administrator Witt may care to join Chairman Long in sharing with these thoughts on what he's about to say.
They're enjoying our county for the wrong reasons, right? No, just, never mind.
Certain part.
Yeah, I guess when I look at this project, I really don't question the need at all. I think we've been through a lot of these presentations enough, and I'm sure, I trust the Public Protection Committee to look at the details. And so I think all in all, we're going to have to do this project at some point. So my real question is, what would be the impact of possibly just delaying it a couple of years? And really from two standpoints, one from the sheriff's standpoint, and then also from a financial standpoint. You know, we just borrowed eighty million dollars to build this building. And it's gone really well, and we did it at a good time, and it's had minimal impact on our taxpayers. But it's still pretty fresh in my mind, at least. And I'm wondering if, what the impact would be, again, from sheriff's standpoint and from a financial standpoint and the taxpayer's standpoint of just delaying it a couple of years. That might give us a little more time to fine tune some of the details as well. So that's kind of a broad question, but.
Yeah. Chief Deputy Standard kind of highlighted those jail population numbers and the projections and trajectory and what happens when we start to exceed those numbers. You're going to start housing out of county. So looking into the pros and cons of delaying this project. Can the project be delayed three years? Absolutely, the project can be delayed three years. You're going to have some impact from that then. So what's the impact going to be? You're going to have, by, if you do it in twenty-thirty instead of twenty-twenty-seven, two-year completion, you're really looking out to twenty-thirty-two before you're housing in the new jail. You're going to, at that point, probably be housing inmates out of county. So you say, well, the cost isn't that bad, but it's all operating costs. So building is a construction cost, it's a capital cost paid for by debt. If you're spending twenty-two thousand dollars a month housing inmates out of county, that's an operating expense. And that's where we're tight on our operating costs. So you're shifting from capital to operating, which is just the opposite of what I usually like to do. So you're going to create an ongoing expense that way with the out-of-county housing. The other thing then is, we talked about that inflation number. When this project started, it was closer to thirty million. Scope changed it a little bit, but it was also inflation. Inflation's really driven it up. If you delay this three more years, you're probably adding ten to twelve million dollars with a three-year delay onto this project. So just know that the longer you wait, the more it's going to cost in total for capital. I totally understand the point, though, about timing and spacing between the bond issues. One of the things that we do, on the plus side then, one of the things that we do is we have a graduated step down of our debt payments. And so between twenty-seven and twenty-thirty, our current debt schedule actually drops by about a million dollars a year. So I have some built-in step increases built in there. So the overall impact for the taxpayers, probably even at a higher bonding amount, might be less for the taxpayers by waiting three years. So that's one of the plus sides of it. So it really boils down to your policy decision. I mean, this is your decision to make, those are the pros and cons of it. But you have to decide, is twenty-seven the right year or is twenty-thirty the right year? Did that answer your question?
Yes. And then can you review one more time, if you could, the impact on taxpayers?
Yeah. So the project itself, because of the way that we'll, we layer the debt in, isn't so bad. We'd be looking at about, and whether you do it in twenty-twenty-seven or twenty-thirty, I think because of the inflationary factor, they come up pretty close to each other. But it's going to be about twenty to twenty-five cents per thousand dollars of equalized value. So a hundred thousand dollars, if you use the lower side of that, it's twenty dollars. A four-hundred-thousand-dollar average house, that's eighty dollars a year. So, I mean, overall, the impact of this project and the grand scope of things has a fairly minimal impact. So eighty to a hundred dollars a year is really the total cost for the average household.
I think we've had pretty good discussion on this issue at this point. And so if there's no further discussion, I was going.
I think there's more.
I know, I was just going to say, if there wasn't, I was going to suggest that maybe the issue we're getting down to is deferral for three years till twenty-thirty. And that would be guidance to the administrator that we'd raise if we raised, let's say that was the motion, raised a green panel or retain some fashion of what we're doing in twenty-twenty-seven, maybe with an attempt to cut back some costs.
Okay.
So that's what we're sort of focusing in. So are there further comments?
Yeah, I guess two questions or thoughts. I'm looking further down the capital budget list. I see an eleven-point-six million dollars for emergency communications infrastructure upgrade. I'm assuming that would be on the same bond as the jail expansion because there's no way we have that much cash sitting around in the KIP.
Correct.
Yeah. So it's a little bit more than fifty-seven-point-six. I mean, obviously, you can move that, but you want to minimize your number of bond issues for something like eleven million dollars. But would it be, I guess, possible to drop that fifty-seven-six number down to thirty million if you, I guess, minimize the amount of current renovation you did? And maybe, you probably don't have the answer right off the top of your head right now. But, and eliminated some of that phase-four pod-related stuff. Just get the initial intake cells and some of the additional mental health capacity in.
So I'll address the last question first, then I'll go back to the communication portion of it. So in the pod, I think the only scalable part you have for it is that additional pod. And that's about ten to twelve million of the project. So you can take that out, but that leaves you at about forty-five million. So if you wanted to scale it and defer the pod, yes, that's a possibility, that's an option. But you're really bringing it down to about forty-five million. On the communications, so yes, we're going to talk about that next. It has a little bit more complexity to it for timing-wise. Could a big portion of that be delayed to twenty-thirty? Probably, but probably not all of it. So we'll probably talk about three options there. One is to do it in twenty-twenty-seven and then defer only the jail. Two, split it, defer the portions that can be deferred to twenty-thirty to stay with one bond issue in twenty-thirty, and then leave a portion that has to be done in twenty-seven still, in twenty-seven. Or three is you leave everything in twenty-twenty-seven and you do the bond issue there. So, I mean, those are really the three issues. We'll go into that because there's a little bit more complexity to it. We'll have Terry Anderson come up and give you the specifics on that after we're done with the jail portion. But I think that has separate choices that can be made. But knowing what you're doing with the jail will help with which choice you go with there.
Supervisor Carlson. What effect would it have on manpower manning the new jail? Will we, how many more employees would we need to man it and the cost?
Yep. So we did that analysis with the expansion plan. It was four additional jailers that would be necessary. We added two with the referendum, though. So we're really only too short of having the minimum staffing to be able to operate the expansion.
Supervisor Barkley.
Thanks, Ken, for putting us all together. But so when we did the expansion on the government center, we borrowed at a really good time.
Yes.
Any inkling of that changing? I mean, I know rates are up right now, but in the near future, maybe the next year or two, where rates would come down, then it makes better sense for us to take that on then.
Yeah. When we borrowed the eighty million dollars for this project, rates were at thirty-year lows. So, I mean, it was the best time to borrow. You know, if you look at twenty-twenty hindsight, that was the perfect time to do it. So we hit it just right. Thirty years, though, since we've seen a rate that low. So it's not going to be that low three years from now, two years from now, or five years from now. It's going to be something that's higher. Rates had gone up, I think they've escalated kind of at their peak. They're actually coming back down a little. We caught the downswing when we borrowed for the highway shop in Hudson here. So I think there's room for them to come down further, probably not to the level they were before.
Sure.
And five years out, you know, I really, I don't know.
Anybody's guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you're through some different fiscal cycles then, by then, so it's going to be hard to tell.
I remember, like you said, this was thirty million dollars two years ago, and now it's almost sixty, so.
Yep.
Thanks, Ken.
Are there any further questions to the administrator on? Supervisor Connor.
First off, I'm, you know, I am in favor of the project for the, however we do it. But, and the main reason why is looking at it fiscally and looking at it for what the jail population, the proofs are there. The issue is, though, that we didn't discuss, or that I didn't really hear much of, is how many of the people in the jail population that we're currently housing are people that are either drug, alcohol, mental illness, all of the things that, where they may not be necessarily that they have to be under a high-security type environment for housing? And then with that, how many of the people that were housing with a lot of these issues become like a revolving door where they aren't getting the outside help that's necessary to keep them so they're not put into that position? And then therefore take up bed space in the jail system? And with all of that in mind, should, you know, the county's responsible for these people no matter what. So are we looking at the best alternatives for this? Or should we be looking at other alternatives to, along with this project, for how to handle this so that our future, we can get better control under this and help these people so that they aren't in a revolving system where they can't get family support because they're being shipped to Winnebago or wherever? Should we be looking at other alternatives for this? And I would really like to see this studied a little bit and figure it out. Because this is a lot of money. And we're talking about a lot that's being spent for people that may need help, that we aren't doing it in the best manner, so we're not spending our money in the best way so that we're helping these people and keeping our costs controlled. So we'll leave.
Yeah, so maybe the best way to talk about it is anecdotally from, if you took a snapshot of today's population, I would say that we have approximately ten to fifteen inmates that have upper-level mental health, medical dependency issues that need a little bit higher level of care and supervision security. So you look at the nine-person special housing unit, we have eight inmates in there right now. Looked at that population this morning, and they all need to be in there. They all have either suicide attempt already in the jail, have assaulted staff, have assaulted other inmates, generally do not get along with anybody. So because that's full, and we try to keep at least one cell available so we can put somebody in there, we try to step them down if we can. If we have to make room for an inmate that's assaultive, then an inmate that should be in the special housing unit gets stepped down to F block, which is a four-person traditional housing cell in our pod. So we're constantly playing the shell game there with that population. So that, I would say, which in this case is ten to fifteen percent of our population because we're about a hundred and forty, give or take. And then as far as are we handling sentencing and sending those inmates to jail appropriately? Like I talked earlier about trying to reduce the number of people that are coming to jail through policy decisions. And Chair Feidler, Vice Chair Feidler is heavily involved in the CJCC. And we've been working tirelessly through a lot of different committees in the CJCC to find alternatives to sending people to jail. Some things are working, some things are in process, progress. But we have the Justice Support Center, which has also curbed our population. So, but to get back to your point, one of the questions that you had raised about, are we sending people to jail there that shouldn't be in jail or extending their time in jail when there's other alternatives? So some of the issues we have are the population that we're talking about that's in the special housing unit. A lot of times, they become assaultive or destructive to county property or other inmates or staff. They catch another charge, they end up with cash bonds, and they're sitting there on some of these cash bonds in lieu of their underlying case being taken care of. So it is, becomes a revolving problem to a certain extent. But like I say, I think we've tried to do a really good job lately of. of trying to curb the number of inmates that are coming into our jail to the best of the judges and prosecutors' ability.
Yeah, also to that point Supervisor Connor, there's a correlation between some of the services that our Health and Human Services Department offers in order to treat people that have addiction issues that, you know, when they get off of their treatment, they can end up in situations that would lend them to landing in the jail. And so putting more resources into early prevention or treatment of those issues is beneficial in keeping the jail population on. I mean, there's a there's a connection there between some of the programs from Health and Human Services to the public safety departments.
Are there any further questions on this specific topic of the jail, I'll call it expansion? If not, I'm going to call on Chairman Long to perhaps suggest a way ahead on this relative to the guidance to the administrator.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're kind of starting to get into the weeds a little bit, which is really the the job of the Public Protection Committee. So maybe I'll suggest that maybe a vote at this point would be to either proceed with this project in 2027 or delay the project and then turn this kind of back over to the Public Protection Committee to continue to fine tune and determine the the appropriate timing and scope of the project just to give us a little more time and flexibility. Does that make sense?
Supervisor Shirley.
Just a quick question. I know we're getting to this next, but the communication infrastructure, we're going to have to pair that to bottom together. So what's the timing of, what's the impact of that project? If we were to slide it two years or three years, what's the ideal of that?
Yeah, I was going to save this slide to last because I looked at what would be a bond issue in 2027 versus 2030. So the first column is our current debt schedule. You can see we're just under $11 million. We're still at that in 2027. We're at 10.8. By 2030, it drops down to 10.1 and the following year, 9.7. So there's a million-dollar step down there. So I looked at two options, and and there's more scenarios than this. I just looked at two. So what if we borrowed 75 million in 2027? How would I blend that with our current structure? And what if we borrowed 85 million in 2030? So a higher dollar amount, but a little bit later. So the current line that looks really good, that's our current debt structure. Adding in a borrowing in 2027 is that sort of orange line. So it sort of goes up, sits there a while, and then comes back down in the future. So similarly structured would be a 2030 borrowing where you come up. You're just slightly under that, and you're able to save a little bit. And then it tapers back down and just extends out longer. So the fact of the matter is whether it's 75 million, whether it's 85 million, it's a lot of money. It increases our payments. There's no ways around that. I can do it either way, though, in 27 or 2030. I can structure it to the best benefit for the county and the taxpayers, but it's an increase no matter which way you get to it.
So my question wasn't necessarily financial. It was the the need of the communication infrastructure.
Okay.
Where where is our our current need for that? Is that something that we can push out three years? Or should we be looking at moving the jail expansion to 2029 instead of 2030 to help with that project? That was my main.
So is it more really on the communication tower then? Which one is a priority or?
Not necessarily which one's a priority because I think, well, I mean, we'll get into the to the to that. But how how is that that need specifically? We have it in 2027 now. Are we going to have issues moving that project?
The jail project from 27?
No, the communication tower.
The communications tower. There's a portion of the communications tower you can move. There's a portion of it that you cannot move. Some of it will have to be done in 2027.
Okay.
Yeah, and and we'll get into the details, and we'll have a cost break split for you on that.
The bonding for these projects is not intrinsically married together. It's just a convenience. So we could decide to move forward with the communications portion of this and some some aspect of the jail renovation if need be. But it's not, it's being presented there as an option, but not a necessity in in as far as method goes.
Correct, yeah. You can do two bond issues. You can borrow in 27, and you can borrow in 30. And you can mix and match which projects you want to do. We can do just about anything you want. We just can't do everything you want.
I think that brings us back to the suggestion that the chairman made about delaying the jail expansion portion of this till 2030.
Yeah.
And providing guidance to the administrator to say that's something we should be seriously looking at. Refer it back to committee, and it'll come back before the board several times in the interim. And but for now, making the kind of tentative decision not to proceed with that aspect of the proposal in 2027. Does that capture it, Mr. Minister?
Yeah, I I think that's exactly what we're looking at as of this moment right now. Is this a still a 2027 project for the jail? Or should the jail portion be pushed back? 2030, I think, is what we would be looking at on paper. It can always change in the future. But for the jail staff, the sheriff's office, they really need to know. Is this happening in 27 or is this more of a 2030 project? Because they have to make decisions about maintenance items, about future planning and staffing and all of those things. But they need to know when that date is coming. So it's beneficial to assign when that's going to be.
So a green paddle, this Supervisor Lee.
So if there were, if this does, if we decide that we want to defer it to 2030, whatever, further out than 27, if there were some things that between the committee and the board, we decide, well, maybe we should really enhance that receiving area, would is this, we aren't, I I just want to make sure that we're not putting every everything off if it's a, like, need, total need. Like, clearly, the receiving area to me is a need. But I don't know. If that made any sense, maybe it didn't.
Yeah, you can delay the project to 2030 right now. And next year at this time, when I'm in front of the the then-county board, which will have some different members, they may say, no, move it back to 2027. I mean, it's possible. That's not good for staff because then you're yo-yoing the staff back and forth. But it's it's possible. Nothing's ever committed until it's in the next year. But like I said, for planning purposes, the staff would really like to know whether this is a 27 or if this is going to get delayed.
Supervisor Spencer.
Okay, a couple of things that I just want to share. I have never been part of a building project that in the end, we said was a good idea to set set it farther ahead because it always costs just about double of what we need. We the need is there now. The the ability to do it is there now. So I suggest that we spend grit our teeth, spend money now because it will be, that infrastructure will be there. The other thing that didn't come up is that the state of Minnesota has okayed marijuana. Wisconsin is going to do that in the next few years, even though I would not vote for that either. I think that's going to just add more need for the holding area because in other, in in counties, I have a have a an acquaintance that works in another county as a parole officer. And he says drugs, they just don't have room even to to deal with it. There are people out there in the street that they have to turn back out in the street because there's no place to house them. Therefore, they're committing suicide, they're breaking and entering, those kinds of things. That's that's what this portion of the jail is going to be for. And that's what we're going to need probably sooner rather than later based on the way our our rule is coming. So I I would support moving on now. Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a bill to pay, but it's going to be a bill to pay in 2030 also. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Any further comments? Seeing none then, I unless you'd like to rephrase the motion. It's not a motion, it's a guidance to the administrator with the general idea that there would be delay, but there's nothing built in stone. We'd continue to look at this, working carefully with the sheriff and the administrator and other law enforcement entities as to what the requirements are and what the options are. But the general idea was that is, I'll just phrase this way, that a green paddle would support a delay and reconsideration of the details. So with that, if there's no objection, we'll give the administrator.
Would you repeat what you just said, the green paddle would do?
A green paddle will move it out of 27 to a later year. Probably, I'll put it on 2030 for right now, but yeah. So green paddle's a delay. Seven to nine. All right. So seven to delay it, nine not to delay it. So it'd stay in 2027. I think the next question then that I heard was the scope of the project. So we've talked a lot about that scope. I really only see the one breaking point for you. But that's definitely a consideration for you to make also. And that is there's the core part of the project that's going to add these additional cells. The receiving area is going to be different, your intake, your your kitchen, medical. All of that ends up getting moved internally. There's a whole bunch of internal movement on that. That is a big portion of the project. It's probably $45 million of the project. I'll have to confirm with the architect exactly where that is. I think that pod was always something that could be cut off because they cut a hole through the wall after the inmates are secured. And then add on a pod. So I mean, the pod is an addition. That's not going to be necessary in 2030. We'd probably mothball it for a few years other than for convenience, being able to move people over to do maintenance and stuff like that. So you could cut the pod off. It's just when you come back and want to do that pod, it's going to cost you two to three times as much.
Because if we if we also knock off the pod, then that communications piece becomes, could be part of what we still bond for if we decide to do that.
Yeah, the bonding is going to follow where the projects fall. So if you fall in 27, we bond in 27. If you cut it in 27 and 30, then we bond in 27 and 30. So if you push it all to 30, then we bond there. So the bonding follows where where it is. I will blend the bonding wherever you land on the projects. So worry less maybe about the bonding part of it other than that's where the cost, the impact is, but to the projects and the need. Tell me where the projects are needed, and then we'll create a financial plan around that afterwards.
Supervisor Shirley.
I would suggest if we're going to do something, the consensus was to do something in 27. I think we really look hard at that intake area and do that. I know the remodel and the everything else, it's not ideal. But let's look at doing the intake area without the remodel, do the remodel with the pod. It makes sense flow-wise to me that you're going to need the pod to move people over to to do the remodel for. So that, to me, would make more sense to do the intake, hold off on the remodel until you do the pod.
You want to speak to that?
Sure. I think we could pare down some of the remodel in that scenario, not all of it because there's a lot of moving parts. Part of the issue with anywhere that we expand is we landlocked the kitchen. And there's some outdated equipment and things in there. So I think it's fair that we come back, we we work with the architects, we come back. We look at possibly paring it down and what our phasing is going to be and bring that back to the Public Protection Committee going forward. It's it's doable.
Supervisor Hansen.
Considering how close this is divided, and and nobody's making this an easy decision, how do we anticipate we can fund this if it requires three-quarters vote for the bonding?
Yeah, I would hope that, you know, and this is your internal politics amongst the county board. But I would hope that at some point, you understand that the jail project is needed. You might not have gotten it in the year that you want it. But if your peers have said, nope, this is this is when we think we should build it, that at the end of the day, you come around and capitulate to doing the borrowing. That would be my hope, is that you understand that everyone agrees that the expansion is necessary to some degree, so.
Supervisor Carlson.
Having worked in a jail where we went through an expansion in St. Paul, so Ramsey County, that's probably bigger in scope than this, it made a lot of difference for safety, be able to separate people properly, injuries went down, we had less fights. And touring this jail, I mean, it's it's a nice facility, but it looks like a nightmare to me running it and trying to Tetris people like they mentioned and stuff. So I'm convinced a new jail is needed for a lot of reasons. It'll be good for the morale of the officers and the safety also. So we keep people hired here and not leaving possibly. So I'm convinced it's needed, and I get scared about the amount of money. It's a lot of money, but it's going to be needed at some time or another anyway. So I figured we should just do it now.
What about phasing of the project? I think that's the question that we're at right now then. So do you want to see this project reduced in scope to the smallest step possible? Or just do the whole project as the architects laid out? So.
Supervisor Chairman Long.
Yeah, I think that question really goes to the Public Protection Committee to dive into the details and determine the appropriate scope. So I I don't know that we can really determine that at this level. We know that we're going to do something in 2027, and we'll we'll kind of go on that that basis.
I think what what Ken's asking for, though, is do we want to reduce scope or do we want to do the whole thing right now? And I think that's important.
Yeah, so my question, I guess, I would pose it as a green paddle for leaving the project in full in 27. And a red paddle would be to break that project into sections that it can be broken into and then delaying part of the project. So this would, so it'd be a partial delay or the whole project in 27. That make sense? I that would be additional good guidance for us going forward. And for the KIP, we'll leave it in 27 right now. But for planning purposes, we're going to start to look at where that break is and how we could split it. So leave it in 27 in full or split the project? Yeah. Full project or split the project? So five to 11. So the 11 votes were to split the project. All right, so that gives me some guidance then. It's going to be in 2027, but we're going to look at where the breaking point is on that project and and look to see where it can be broken off and where we're going to land that second piece of that project then. So we really appreciate that guidance. That's very important for planning purposes. And I know that it took a while for us to get through all that, but I think we're done with the jail for now. You are released on good behavior. All right, so we will move on then to the next project. If there's anything else in emergency communications that's not highlighted that you'd like to talk about, please let me know. There are a couple of red numbers out there in 2030, but they're really recurring. You've seen them before in prior years, they just get a recycle. And I'm going to call Terry Anderson up, and he's going to explain that emergency communications part and talk about that project.
Good morning. I'll start off with hitting some of the slides. I'll try to keep it brief. Some of you have already went through this process with me at some of the committee already. So currently, our structure, we did a major upgrade. Some of you might remember. So currently our structure, we did a major upgrade, some of you might remember, in 2017. We ended up with five VHF simulcast channels, one of which is a digital channel, the other four analog. At that time, we went from five tower sites to 14 that we currently have. It was a major forklift upgrade to the system, enhancing the system that you guys allowed. Currently, we have 11 dispatch radio positions, split between Hudson and Baldwin, our backup area in Baldwin. In 2011, just a fact for you, we had 1,157 radios on the system in 2011. In 2025, we have 1,986 radios on the system with all the services that are out there for the county. In our long-range plan back in 2024, we decided we'd take a look at ourselves, see where the emergency services are, and we hired a consultant to help guide us on a path to see where we are, where we need to be. We began to plan for the future with our KIP projects. We wanted to have everything out on the horizon so everyone could see what was coming in the future for us and emergency services. In 2027, there was a KIP item for $2 million. It was the Hammond Tower. Currently, we reside on the tower that's at the old highway shop. That lease is done at the end of 2029. We could not come to an agreement with the Hanson Brothers that are currently owning the tower, so we need to find a replacement tower, wherever that is, by the end of 2029. That process, if we have to build a tower, takes two years approximately if we have to construct a new tower with all the permits, all the studies that have to be done, including the ones for the feds, to make everything work. So it's a two-year process at minimum to get that done, and we have to be off the tower at the Hammond Old Highway Site by Christmas of 2029. And that means vacant and stripped all our equipment off of the tower. The radio console, hardware, and audio recorder, you saw them items up there for 2028. Them are recurring themes that have to be done. In 2029, we had a base station refreshed for all the radios that are on the radio infrastructure at the tower sites. That itself was $2.75 million. And then later on in the 2032 area, we have to consider replacement of the actual dispatch consoles, the radios at the consoles. That's 1.3 million estimated the cost. So with looking at all of them, let me back up. As we went through the process of looking at them numbers, getting them all together, we work with the Highway Department, they're on the system as well, on the radio infrastructure. They have some concerns of some, on the fringe of the county, on the corners, having communications with their trucks when they're out maintaining the roads. The Medical Examiner's Office, they have two of their transport vehicles that have radios as well, so we need to take and consider them as well. And then again, with working with the local and state public safety entities for input, we reached out to all of them and discussed with them where they are, the state level, what they're doing with enhancing their radio system through, now through the end of 2029. And then as well, we took and discussed with the public safety entities within the county. We reached out, we did a survey. I got a number of all their mobiles, portables, and pagers, that's how I know the numbers of today, what they have. And as well, we discussed with them several topics, what they felt were needs that they wanted in the radio system, what are needs they want, and everything else that they want, both fire EMS and law enforcement, and as well, the Highway Maintenance Department. Several of the needs were identified. There's ask for additional channels, whether you call them talk paths, channels, talk groups. There was ask for tactical channels. Tactical channels in both worlds of the law enforcement, fire, and EMS, they all wanted tactical channels. They call them tactical, but it's when they break off and go into tactical, however you want to term it, when they're at work in a scene. The law enforcement has tactical if they're dealing with a high-risk situation where they have to do with safety, both for the officer, but also the individual that they are dealing with, whether it's a mental health crisis, whether it's somebody that's having a bad day, or if it's someone that's violent. Encryption, you see that line item in there. Encryption is a big thing, big buzzword that you're hearing these days. There's been talk about it. There's a talk that there's a desire to have it in the law enforcement world. Not so much, you know, there's a, I think people think it's hide everything they're doing. It's not that intent at all, but it's to protect the officers that are dealing with a high mental crisis situation, but also to protect the mental health crisis person that they're dealing with or the offender, but also the victims. If someone's had a sexual assault, you don't need to know the address in the public of where they are. If there's names shared during any of them events, them are not, should not be known to the public because it's their victim rights being violated there in some aspect. Okay? There's been an ask from departments a lot lately that they want recordings of their tactical communications, more so of training, how to learn from what they did, what they could do better, but also for the, in our world, we call it quality assurance, of trying to understand what we could do better. So there's been an ask for them to record all tactical channels. Right now, I cannot do that because I don't have all the capabilities to capture in that audio that they talk when they're locally at the scene of an incident. There's been an ask for digital frequencies. We have one digital frequency. One of the investigators described it to me, he said it's like analog TV versus digital TV. Some of you might remember the change that came back when we were younger. It's crisper, it's cleaner for being digital, and sometimes sounds a heck of a lot better than analog. There's not a lot of hissing and popping when they're on analog in some of them fringe areas. Interoperability, we're kind of stuck where we are with the state of Minnesota. They're operating on the 800 megahertz. Currently, our radios don't have that. We have to patch between us and the state of Minnesota to have that interoperability when we go over there, when they come back over here, for both law, fire, and EMS. There's also to the east, Dunn County, they operate on the WISCOM system that currently exists, the state of Wisconsin statewide frequency. There are also a fact of, right now, an individual out there in the fire and EMS world can buy a radio off eBay, program it up, and operate on our radio system. There's no security guards in there from preventing people from doing that. Part of it in the future is to have a security level of ID programmed into their radio that the radio system will be smart enough, it doesn't, if it does not know you, your ID, you don't get on the system, you cannot transmit. So we're going to add a security layer of that for the future. Also, we needed to look at, and I'll get to the main part of this later on, the ability to scale for the future. Right now, we're limited at the number of channels or talk groups that we have, and with the population growth that's coming, and all the events and incidents that we have increasing, we're going to need more scalability for all these first responders out there to have more confident communications with each other and also with us in the communications center. During this process, we looked at five different items. You notice the one remained neighboring system partnerships. We had a mini summit, if you will, with my counterparts from the counties surrounding us. We had a discussion of what their plans are for the future, where they want to be in 10 to 15 years, like we were doing, to see if there was some savings that we could partner, work as partnership in doing things. Some of them are going to remain where they are, they're just happy where they are, have no plans of changing or scaling anything. Two others were kind of interested, like I said, Dunn County is already on the WISCOM system, they're debating about transitioning to the new state system that's coming, so that's what their plans are. And then Pierce County is like we are right now, they're in a little bit behind where we are, not behind as in, as bad, just in the planning process, maybe is a good way of putting it. But they are thinking, what we ended up thinking of, is where they want to go someday. So getting back to it, the WISCOM 800, the state of Wisconsin, their WISCOM system, they are currently updating from a 700 trunk system to an 800 trunk system. They are not promoting any new day-to-day users, they are only doing it as interoperability. So currently, right now, we can't jump on their system for day-to-day operations, they do not have the capacity to do that. Plus, the state of Wisconsin is in control of that system. In the current system, they have to change up because they did not maintain their system. Their system is falling apart. There's some sites that are completely dead because they did not maintain them. I like having control, not that I'm a control freak, but I like to maintain our equipment and get the life cycle of the system out of it. The armor system, it's the Allied Radio Matrix Emergency, it's the acronym ARMOR. State of Minnesota, it's one heck of a system. It's 800 megahertz. You can stand on a portable up at the Canadian border and talk to somebody at the Iowa-Minnesota border on a portable clears the bell. Cost a lot of money to build a system, but they did that back in the early 2000s with grant monies from back during the 9/11 era. To join that system would be a minimum of $15 million roughly. That's just to join. That doesn't include any of the hardware, any of the software for that system. And there again, the state of Minnesota, Minnesota DOT would be maintenance, they would take care of it. They take care of their system, but there again, we are not in control of it, they are. The next one, Whipson's, the Wisconsin Public Safety Network. Motorola, one of the brands, was a, did not win the bid for the WISCOM project, so they came out with their own Whipson, and they want to push that out there for anybody that doesn't want to go on the state of Wisconsin system to join the Whipson group, where they have a quasi-state system in theirs. But there again, there's a hefty cost, and there again, Motorola kind of maintains the system at their whim, and the, they call it the core. We have a decision if we were going to do that, whether we house all the servers here, or it's all done in the cloud, so to speak, with them in charge of it, maintaining it. And I wasn't, I wasn't in the group that we had, wasn't too in favor of that. You might have heard of AT&amp;T FirstNet, came out of the 9/11 where they wanted a cell company to provide radio over internet communications, ROIP. Well, FirstNet's good in concept if you are a populated area and have the specific band that FirstNet operates on, band 14. It's not everywhere in our county, so there would be dead spots, not a viable option for us here in St. Croix County. We, our current system, VHF, well, we looked at adding channels. Some of you might say, why don't you just add channels to what you have now and add more? The problem is, I always say it's, think of it like a six-inch pipe, a water pipe, if you will. We add additional channels, each of them have a frequency. We have to filter, protect every channel from each other, and pretty soon the filtering constricts that water flow down to a three- or a four-inch pipe. The tip of the antenna right now has 80 watts of power at the tip outbound, but I filter and have to constrict if I add more channels, and pretty soon I'm down to 40 watts. My distances are not great at that point. And the availability of VHF frequencies are far and slim between because they have to, if you will, play nice with each other, so I don't have to put bigger filters on to protect each frequency. So that there, just adding one channel is $750,000, if I can find one pair that works. And there again, that's one time, and to add anymore, it's going to be $750 to $1 million per channel, trying to get them that play nice with one another. VHF trunking, basically, it's a trunking system, and I'll explain trunking near then, the last slide, was to maintain our frequencies that we have and then operate in a trunking system. But there again, we'd only have a number of channels, not a lot, and from what I learned, what we learned, that there's approximately only 12 agencies in the US that operate a VHF trunking. Apparently, it's very difficult to make that system work and be an appropriate system. That's why there's so few that are operating. And then we looked at doing our own 800-trunked megahertz system, or 7, 800 combination hybrid, and that's where we landed on for that, currently where we are. And I'll explain, the 7, 800 trunk system is a band that's not really used a lot. Most of the major cities are operating on that, the state of Minnesota system's on that. But there's available frequencies in that spectrum that allow us to get multiple frequencies or talk paths, if you will, consecutively, that play nice, the filtering won't be that great, and there's space, so down the road, 15, 20, 25 years, we can just keep adding if there's a need for that down the future. The 800 trunking, the megahertz, right now, the bottom left is a conventional system. Think of it, each of the channels are the tellers standing in there in line. Right now, in the conventional world, where our channel is law enforcement dedicated on one specific channel, fire and EMS don't communicate, it's a dedicated channel. The far-right channel, you can say is for fire and EMS. The center channel is a channel that they both can use if needed during larger events, but right now, no one's on that. They're strictly law enforcement on the left, fire and EMS on the right. They have to wait till there's availability to talk on that channel, so you get a backup. There's people that can't talk because they're waiting for someone to get off the radio. Same thing on the fireside over there on the right, there's people waiting to talk, but they can't because there's somebody on the radio talking. Now, the upper right, the trunked system, there's three talk paths. In the trunked system, you're not dedicated to one channel, you have talk group, it's a code, if you will, in computer language, and the system is monitoring for that code and puts it into a talk group. So you have three talk paths, so three people simultaneously in a trunked system can talk. There's less people waiting, there will be if you don't have enough talk paths, but right now, in this diagram, there's three talk paths, three people simultaneously can communicate, and it's okay in the system, it's happy, and you have less congestion because there's always the number of talk paths available, they can communicate on any of them. Moving forward, there is identified, the Hammond Tower has to be replaced either way. There's also in our study, there's some concerns of maybe one, maybe two other towers that need to be built during this process to cover, for coverage in the county. We've identified one on the east end, and I've already spoken to Robbie from Highway, if it's possible to use one of his areas, a little corner of the property that the county has. And then there's also a need possibly in that northeast corner of the county, there's identified a lower coverage area, then we might have to look in that southwest corner, but the terrain down there is hilly. But we're looking at possible solutions between now and then, whenever the system is taking the next step. We'll have to replace all the radio bases, antennas, and enhance the radio infrastructure. If you remember, in 2027 or 2029, we were already going to do that, because it has to be done. Update, refresh the dispatch radio consoles, that was already going to be a 2032 area that had to be done. In transitioning to an 800 system, we'd have to upgrade them. The public safety user equipment, they have impacts as well, they'd have to buy out new radios, or suggest that they at least part of their radio, that they have, that they go dual-band. Dual-band in part for the 800 system, but also to maintain the current system that we have. Having the dual-band allows them to communicate, monitor Minnesota agencies, communicate directly with them, but also if we go east in dealing with Dunn County or any other county that's on the WISCOM system, but State Patrol operates purely on that system as well. So to allow that interoperability with them. Not that we don't now, but it helps with the whole process. There'd have to be FCC permits applied for, all them have cost. There'd have to be planning and training on their new radio network, and like I indicated, there'd be enhancements for security of the radio system for the future. I know I covered a lot, I didn't get into the details of the cost. The cost is 11.6 million if we were to take this step. That covers the radio infrastructure, including the Hammond site, enhancing that, plus building one, possibly two more sites if needed, taking care of all the radio infrastructure at all the tower sites, the shelters, the towers. From that aspect, the dispatch consoles, it would give the responders out there the ability to have that, I'm not going to say a luxury, because it's not a luxury, but having the capability so they are not waiting but having the capability so they are not waiting to be heard at their event. During larger events, we can separate, have events off on their own talk group where they can take and maintain their conversation. If Command needs to talk to Dispatch, they can communicate back with us clean and have a talk group they can jump on and speak to us directly. Then jump back over and talk with their people at their site internally and have that communication. There's been an ask from the fire and EMS folks for that because it's congested during the incidents where they have seven, eight incidents ongoing. You get one of the larger incidents, like today, it's warm, it's humid, if they have an active fire. A normal, everyday fire that they can handle by themselves today turns into a chaotic scene because they got to request mutual aid because they're rotating crews out of all their gear. They have to throw them in rehab because they're sweating so bad. They have to get liquids in them. They have to take breath from having air bottles. They're sucking more air. Two air bottles, you're going to sit in timeout for a while. Monitor their blood pressure and all that. It takes more recess, more resources on a day like today. Law enforcement. The law enforcement side of it, when they're dealing with an incident, say it's a mental health incident, they go tactical for their own safety, for the individual's safety. Back in 2017, there wasn't so many other groups, if you will. There's the crisis intervention people, the negotiators. They're part of a group that come out during these situations. They're in their own group talking. They need a channel, so they are not clogging up one primary channel. The drone operators, the drones have become a huge benefit for the law enforcement for adding that additional safety factor for them. They can get additional eyes up high, be able to see things. They can communicate with the drone operator or operators, if you will, as well during certain situations. Plus, the tactical group can do their communications, so when there's two or three groups, if you will, operating a scene, they can communicate clearly without getting interrupted by the drone, by the other entities that are trying to do what they need to do as well. So there's a need for that. It also allows the encryption part that I indicated about, there are certain individuals that like to post on Facebook and other social media immediately of what's going across the scanner. And I go back to that encryption will help with that because it's protecting the officers that are operating, not giving away their tactical operations. But also, it's helping the person that's having a mental health crisis or acting out, protecting them from trying to listen or see on social media to counteract what they're hearing on the radio and being posted. It allows all that to safely flow. And by all means, it's encryption if there's doubt that it's hiding everything. Open record still allows all that to flow, just like it normally does.
Terry, thank you for a very, very thoughtful presentation. I wonder if we could call up the administrator at this time to join Terry and kind of put together what Terry's very thoughtful presentation has been, together with our previous action, and how you think those blend together for 2027 and the future, and your further commentary on the scope of the communications request.
Yeah. That's the third time I've heard that presentation from Terry, and I learn something new each time. But so the bottom line, it's very similar to what we did a decade ago, 2014 to 2016. You'd authorized a whole bunch of money. Terry took a couple of years to spend it all, building all of these towers, building that infrastructure. Huge improvement for St. Croix County. We're at the same point now where we're ready to take that next step. So approving this project as one lump sum allows Terry then to take those steps. He'll spend it still over several years, but you have to know that I have part A to do part B or C. So that's why we approve it as one piece. So what we're looking at is this 11.6 million and authorizing it in whatever year you want to authorize it for. But that's when the projects start then. And as Terry was saying, there's a part that absolutely has to start in 2027. Even if you wanted to delay this, there's about $2 million that has to stay in 2027 in order to continue to build this infrastructure. So the question I have for you is, since we know that the jail project is staying, at least in part, in 2027, do you want to mirror or partner this for a single bond issue to do all that in 2027, moving forward over those couple of years?
Question's to the administrator. Supervisor Barkley.
Ken, thank you. And Terry, thank you. The owners of the tower reached out to me this week and wanted some guidance on how to move forward because they do want to come to an agreement. So maybe this isn't the right place, but they do want to, you know, keep using that tower site and save the county the funds to, you know, build a new one. So, you know, I don't know who we need to bring into the same room, but.
Yeah, I've communicated with the tower owner through their broker at least. And I think the problem is, is we both have the same negotiating style. This is my price. Take it or leave it.
Walk away.
Yeah. So, I mean, we do have alternatives. So if it isn't at the right price, we'll build a new tower.
Sure.
So that's where we're at. At the right price, though, absolutely, I'll consider that. And that would save us, you know, probably a million dollars from having to build the tower. But the life of that tower compared to the life of a new tower,
Right.
while the cost might be different, it has a longer life, too. So have them continue to reach out to me.
Okay.
But that's my negotiating style, so.
Can we get you in the room with coffee?
Yeah.
Supervisor Connor, and then Supervisor Shirley.
Just one thing I didn't hear, you know, it might have been in part of the written portion of this. But with the towers, they required to have backup generator units to operate the towers. And then if that's the case, are the towers being, or I'm sorry, are the backup generators and the towers, for instance, being protected with EMF protection or graphite protection, things like that for, it may or may not be an issue for the future?
So any of the towers, we'd like to have generators on-site, backup generators. For that simple fact, everything is computerized nowadays, our radio bases. So even a power blip or anything of that nature that the generator has time to kick on, it can go for several minutes or could be on. We've had generators that have been on in excess of 48 hours during certain storms where there's been a power loss. But they are very vital to our system. For grounding and that, we stay with the STAR 56 standard that's in that industry for that. CAD welding around the system, grounding for lightning strikes that hit the tower and/or shelter, find its way into the system. That's been our standard to have.
Protection from other outside sources.
Outside sources.
Graphite, other, you know, there's, there's other things that are out there right now that knock out power grid systems. And I'm just wondering if you're considering those things for, being that it's our communication systems countywide. And I'm sure that those sites aren't necessarily under real high security or patrolled.
Yeah, so all of our system.
The first rule of Fight Club is you don't talk about Fight Club. So we do have securities in place, but maybe we won't detail all of them at a public meeting. I think that was what the sheriff was shouting from the back of the room. First rule of Fight Club. Just remember that.
So Terry, thank you for putting all that together. When you were going through the different systems, I just want to make sure the one that we're looking at with this project is moving everything digital, correct?
That is correct. On the trunked 800 system, everything will be digital.
Okay, so.
Let me state that. Everything will be digital except their paging channel right now. That's one of the five. We are maintaining that in the VHF world for the simple fact of the 536 pagers that are out there. We're trying to save money on all the municipalities having to buy new pagers. We're still going to maintain that as-is in the new world. We'll patch it into a talk group if we proceed with the project. So it'll be on both systems. They will keep their pagers that they have. But also, the outdoor weather sirens won't have to be programmed. The municipalities won't have to do any changes. They'll all remain as-is and still function as-is without any changes. But the, everything in the radio bases will all be refreshed.
Okay. So that was my other question was, if we switch all of this out, are we, are we then mandating our municipalities to upgrade their systems as well to communicate with us?
The radios and that, yes. That's one of the things, that's a good reminder. So all of them will have to be replaced. Majority of them will have to be replaced. We've been telling them for some time they should start looking at replacing them. I know there's a lot of them that are planning in their process out in the budgets. I had several of them ask, you know, when are we going to? And I explained our process. But there's a part that Ken indicated, and I think Supervisor Connor asked earlier. When we do get to the point of moving forward with the project during the RFP, there'll be a part of it in there stipulated for the vendor to show a discounted rate. And before we let the RFP go, I'll do another round of survey with all the agencies, how many radios they need. Because we've learned that if we give them a number of radios that we would like to purchase, they will give us a huge discount in numbers that drives the price down, so.
Supervisor Rice.
Yes, thank you for that presentation. It's very informative. And I think all of us are very aware of, anytime there's some kind of a natural disaster or some kind of after-action report, communications always gets highlighted. So thank you for this. I'm just a little curious here as far as, oh, I kind of lost my train of thought there after thinking. I'll come back to it if it comes to me. Oh, the tax impact. Important. Give us a feel for, if we were to adopt this in whole, what would the tax impact be?
This was included in that number I quoted earlier. So the 75 million or 85 million, I sort of kept them all in one year. So it's part of that $20 to $25 per $100,000.
Mr. Administrator, if there are no further questions, would you care to suggest how you would like to receive your guidance for that communications segment of this presentation?
Yeah. Considering that the larger portion of the jail project is going to stay in 2027, my recommendation would be to keep one bond issue. I would leave this project in 2027 also because that's the first stage is going to be done in '27. So that's my question is, is this project as-is staying in '27 and we're good with it? Or are there other ideas that you want to pursue? So a green paddle is leave the 11.6 in '27 and proceed as we're currently planning. All right. That's unanimous vote.
Question for the administrator. We've taken about an hour, an hour and 45 minutes for the first two. And I know the first two were probably the most in need of full discussion, and it's been very good discussion. Can you estimate how long it would take you to complete the rest of the presentations, or are we in need of a break at this point?
I mean, we're probably 15 to 20 minutes out from the end.
I'm just suggesting we carry forward and we'll proceed, not trying to cut off any debate. But if we're going to be done in 20 minutes, let's charge on.
Okay. Yep. So the next project we have on there is a Stryker Pro stretcher for the medical examiner's office. And so this is a new project, just came up in 2026. It's a relatively small project, but it was an identified need. And the need doing it earlier rather than later, and the small size of the scope of the project, we went ahead and put it in 2025. Any questions about that project? That look good to you? Give a gift for the new medical examiner? All right. We'll put a bow on it and we'll keep that in 2026. Her birthday's coming up anyways, so. So now we move into the parks department. So this is the last section on here. So the routine stuff I've taken off, but the other projects we've left on there. So the first one is Project 10075. So this is phases two and three of the Willow River State Bike Connection. These are tied to grants. If you look down at our funding sources, then you can see that additional grants are coming in. And these grants have been secured already. I think they're 80% of the project. 80%, is that right? Yeah. 80% of the project. So we have 80% of the project funded already. So I know the 2.2 million, that's the total scope of the project. Our portion is only going to be 20% of that. So I just wanted to confirm, we're going to continue on and proceed with those projects? Yeah. The next one then is Park Entrance Kiosk. So this was a new idea that came up. We think it's going to enhance the benefit of the parks and operation of the parks. It's $50,000. So this is part of, you know, you get new management into a department and they come up with new ideas. But considering the relative cost-effectiveness of this, we went ahead and put that into 2026. So park kiosk. Any questions on it, or does that look good? All right. Very good. And then we have the Eckerd Blufflands Park Development. This is the one that got a lot of discussion last year. And I looked right at you, Supervisor Shirley. That's okay. So we have that park in development in 2025. We have the first chunk of money in 2025. The development of that is probably really delayed a little bit, mostly because of the engineering vacancy at Highway. They were supposed to be doing some design work on that roadway, which was the first part of being able to get people into the park. So that's probably just a little bit delayed. But this is the full extent of the project. You can see that those dollar amounts do end further out, but it's just a phasing in of the project. So the question is, continue on with the plan as we've originally laid it out, putting in about a half a million dollars per year? Or because we're a little behind schedule, did you want to delay it a little bit, or what the options are there? So this is a greatly reduced scope from the original $17 million grand plan. We're down to about $3 million total. Supervisor Anderson.
Yeah, I just want to highlight that we discussed that timeline at committee. And the verdict was to leave it as-is for now. And if we get closer to October, November, and we feel it's worthy to move that $500,000 for next year, we will. But I think it's prudent to leave it where it is or as planned for now. See if we can kind of get back to that original schedule.
So any further discussion on the Eckerd Blufflands development? Questions about what that entails or anything like that? All right. Eckerd Blufflands, as we have it laid out right now? All right. Thank you, everyone. And the last project to review then is the Parks Playground Equipment. So this is a new project. It's $150,000. And let's see, which park was that? It's going to be out at the, several playgrounds, Peninsula Playground, Whispering Oaks, and Homestead, so. Some of those playgrounds are from the 1970s. I recognize some of that equipment. But this would be an upgrade planned out for 2030. So any questions on upgrading our playground equipment? You have grandchildren, Supervisor Adams. Yeah, yeah. All right. Very good. So that's it for the projects. So the only other thing then, and we've talked about it already, but financing for them. How do we pay for all this? Now that you've told me when you want to do things, how do we pay for it? So for 2026, and that's the big one, so we have $4.6 million in projects. We do have grant funding, though, of $1.7 million. So that leaves a KIP balance left over of $2.8 million to pay for. So we have currently about $4.9 million in the KIP. So we have enough money. about four point nine million in the KIP. So we have enough money to pay for the twenty twenty-six projects with cash on hand. So no borrowing is necessary for twenty twenty-six. We are good for that first year. Now, that is going to draw a lot of those funds down. So it's important that any fund balance that we have available, when we look at that in August, September, that we're able to move some money back in so that we can, you know, fund future years. That's part of the big plan, the overall plan, is that's how that works. So we can avoid those future debts. In twenty twenty-seven, then, right now, I have a seventy-five million dollar bond issue in that year. We'll size that bond issue based upon the scope of the projects. But, you know, looking at the communications of eleven point six, and then reducing the scope of that jail project, really to what's, what's the most immediate need in that jail project is what we'll look at. Where can we reduce that to? I'm not promising a huge decrease in that, but we'll come back with something that's probably less than that at the end of the day. So that's where we're at for the next two years. Timing-wise for that bond issue, you know, thinking about that, because twenty twenty-six is set now. We'll have a KIP plan, and we'll build that into the budget. But for twenty twenty-seven's capital projects, that bond issue, it comes up faster than you think. So we'll actually be coming to the county board in December of twenty twenty-six. So, you know, less than a year and a half from now, we'll be in front of the county board for that authorizing resolution. And I think Supervisor Hanson kind of talked about that before. That takes that three-quarters vote of the county board. So some of the challenges there is that supermajority vote. We'll have new county board members. All of you are very educated now on that. So hopefully you rerun, so I don't have to re-educate everybody. But you're an educated board. You got it. You understood all the nuances of these presentations. We will have new county board members that are only, you know, seven months in of their new term when they're asked to vote on that. So that'll take some re-education of any new supervisors that we have in order to understand that big of a vote that they're going to have coming up. But December of twenty-six, that's when that authorizing resolution happens, and that'll be here before you know it. So any questions on the overall plan then of how we're going to finance this? That is all I have for you then. I will turn it back over to you.
Well, Mr. Administrator, thank you very much. I think that was a terrific presentation. You covered all the highlights very nicely. And I just wanted to add, I believe you're going to be featured with a feature article in the Wisconsin Counties Association Next Magazine, Counties, on finances and how to run the finances of a county. So I think that's a pretty remarkable thing that the Counties Association has selected our administrator to write that. And I think his presentation today is reflective of his thoughtfulness and understanding of county finances and the taxpayers' needs. So thank you, Ken, very much. It was really a good presentation. And I really want to thank Chief Deputy Standard and Terry Anderson for also great presentations. I mean, the chief deputy has worked on this for years, literally, to come up with options for us. He's been very open on options. He presented those options, and we took thoughtful debate on them and provided some guidance. And, you know, I understand about half of what Terry Anderson ever says. But I just believe him because he knows so much about this and is so thoughtful and gets the consensus of all those people who are with him to do what he said. So Chief Deputy and Terry, thank you guys very much for your efforts today, too. With that, are there any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none on the announcements. And the date of our next meeting will be determined, but it'll probably be in October, typically the second or third week. But that will work with the administrator on that date. And that will be to go over the final time on the budget. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.